Good evening. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education meeting on March 14th, 2023. It is 7:06 PM. And I'm calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. Full call. The board is here with the exception of Mrs. Chavez, she is recovering. And the executive team is here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Kinsler, would you care to lead us?
Absolutely. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Got the correct piece of paper up here. Guy Kawaski said, "If you have to put someone on a pedestal, put teachers. They are society's heroes." I've been thinking a lot about teachers recently. I've been observing teachers while on our board learning walks and today congratulating our next Teacher of the Year. Today, Mrs. Yumiko Goto was surprised and named the 2023 Teacher of the Year for Arcadia Unified. I decided I'd look up what makes a good teacher. Even the simple Wikipedia search and definition of a good teacher was not at all simple. Duties and functions vary by culture and locale. Even the competencies and qualities vary based on location and culture where the teaching occurs. However, there appears to be agreement that a good teacher is enthusiastic, be able to build positive relationships with their students. Research shows that student motivation and attitudes towards school are closely linked to student-teacher relationships. Enthusiastic teachers are particularly good at creating beneficial relations with their students. Their ability to create effective learning environments that foster student achievement depends on the kind of relationship they build with their students. And I have four studies here that'll prove that over time, if you want to know the exact studies. This may be because students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. It's been said that a great teacher takes a hand, opens a mind, and touches the heart. And the influence of a teacher can never be erased. I hope that our great teachers inspire you as much as they inspire me. And congratulations to Mrs. Yumiko Goto.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsler. May I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Ye, seconded by Mrs. Kinsler. All those who approve say aye.
Aye.
All right, there was no action taken in closed session, so there's no report. Next is our student representative report, and that'll be led by Anvitha Marlapati.
Good evening. My name is Anvitha Marlapati, and I am the student representative to the Board of Education. Tonight, I am joined by two members of ASB's Executive Council, the ASB President and the ASB Vice President, who are here to help deliver this report to report on various school and student affairs, events, and activities.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin O. I am the current ASB President.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Wong, and I am the current ASB Vice President.
And here's our Board of Education report from March 14th, 2023. ASB successfully hosted the 2023 Spring Pep Assembly on Friday, March 10th. The assembly consisted of exciting activities and amazing performances by pep squad, percussion, color guard, and seniors. An engaging teacher and student game was also executed with an orchestra dancer and staff member dancing to viral music sounds. The ASB Vice President officially began the ASB Spring Elections with the informational meeting on March 10th in the lecture hall. The election season will continue with the mandatory candidate meeting on March 21st and start of the preliminary campaigning on March 22nd. And now here's our historian and publicity report. Freshman Council successfully hosted their first Boba fundraiser in collaboration with Oops Boba. The Academics Commissioner hosted the All Academics Bowl where AHS academic teams and students came together to put their knowledge to test over a two-day tournament. The Spring Pep Assembly was full of cheer and enthusiasm. The assembly featured groups with Arcadia Percussion, Wall Guard/Wall Line, Spring Sports, Pep Squad, Staff Members, and Prom Committee. At the assembly, the 2023 Prom theme and location was revealed. The theme will be Lost in the Afterglow at the Wallace Annenberg Building. And here are some additional photos from the Spring Pep Assembly. Moving on, the publicity commissioner has been working to publicize ASB's upcoming election as well as the All Academics Bowl. The EDI Committee will be hosting its connecting through conversation on combating Dura-Auditory Language on Wednesday, March 15th, in the high school's library media center. In celebration of Women's History Month, the committee has also taken to its social media to publicize and promote this special occasion.
Link Crew is working on the recruitment process for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Applications have been submitted, and interviews will take place from March 20th to March 24th. The Academics Commissioner hosted the first-ever All Academics Bowl. It was held from March 6th to March 8th. Students created teams of four and competed in a two-day tournament. The winners played against a team of teachers. Furthermore, Science Olympiad competed at the regional competition on March 4th and placed second. They will be competing at the state meet on April 8th. The Performing Arts Commissioner has completed the February Performer of the Month to highlight a member of orchestra. Theater's upcoming production of Cinderella will be held on March 16th, 17th, and 18th in the Performing Arts Center. The AHS Varsity Boys Volleyball Team took home the win against La Cañada on Wednesday, March 1st. Varsity Swim and Dive won against Temple City and took home first place in the Los Amigos Relay Race, relay meet on Saturday, March 4th. Additionally, the Track and Field Team is off to a stellar start with their season winning every meet that they have competed in so far. Senior Council held their first off-campus bonding event, Parade Ice, at the Pasadena Ice Skating Rink. It took place on March 13th from 9:15 to 11:00 AM. They are also currently planning for the RAHS for the senior class to bring back the tradition of Mr. and Miss AHS.
Moving on, Junior Council is planning and preparing for their upcoming and final bonding event of the school year, Color Me Musubi, which will be held on Wednesday, April 12th from 3:30 to 5:30 PM at the Rally Court. At the event, juniors can decorate their own mini ceramic pot, pick out a flower to grow in their pot, snack on some musubi, and cool down with a cold cup of Thai tea. Sophomore Council is preparing for their upcoming bonding event, You Look Good, which will take place on March 17th. Inspired by the brand Glossier, sophomores will get to decorate mini mirrors and enjoy a Boba bar. They are also hosting a Panda Express Restaurant Fundraiser on March 23rd. Last but not least, oh, sorry, we have two more to go. Freshman Council successfully hosted their first pre-order fundraiser through Oops Boba Arcadia. Distribution was held on March 8th at the Rally Court from 3:30 to 4:30 PM. Students had an option to purchase milk tea, green tea, and mango green tea from any freshman council member from the week of February 27th to March 3rd. Last but not least, the senior panoramic photo will be held on Monday, March 20th at the Salter Stadium. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, students. Our next item is our audience comments. We do have one audience comment today. Before we have the comment, I need to read the statement. "It is now time for audience comments. The Board respects the right of members of the public to speak to the Board regarding matters on the agenda and other matters within the Board's jurisdiction. In accordance with Board bylaws, individual speakers will be allowed five minutes to address the Board. A maximum of 15 minutes total is allocated for public comments to ensure that everyone who completed the request to speak card has an opportunity to be heard. We will be keeping time. We will inform each speaker when they have one minute left, and then when their time is up, so that the meeting can proceed in an orderly and efficient manner. Additionally, in accordance with Board policies, this Board is committed to maintaining an environment that fosters mutual respect amongst everyone in our community. As such, we ask that public comments be delivered in a respectful and civil manner, even on issues that individuals may feel passionately about. Therefore, disturbances or willful interruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. Please note that per California law, specifically the Brown Act, Board members are not allowed to discuss or even comment on what is being shared during the public comment as these topics have not been agendized as required by the Brown Act. If a speaker intends to share issues about a specific staff member, we would like to remind the audience that we have a formal process for addressing personnel complaints. And we ask that you refrain from using an individual's name and encourage you to go through our thorough formal complaint process and procedures before addressing the Board. We also ask that you refrain from using profanity and remind you that there are always students in attendance. Speakers should also note, per California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. Speakers may be held liable for any slanderous or otherwise defamatory statements. I would also like to remind the audience that this meeting is being recorded. We genuinely appreciate everyone's understanding and cooperation. With that said, we will now hear from our first speaker. First speaker is Rhonda Williams, PhD.
Good evening, Board members, executive team. I'm Dr. Rhonda Williams, and my husband and I are proud AUSD parents. Our family has been Arcadia residents for 12 years, and four of our six children are graduates of AHS. The hard work that AUSD teachers, staff, and executive team members have consistently provided have indeed resulted in one of the best school districts in California. The broad range of academic course offerings and an array of social club options definitely helps students become involved in their school and develop their interpersonal skills. However, the recurrence of school-based violence across our nation suggests that schools now need to focus upon more than A through G requirements. AUSD's website states that all pupils have the right to participate fully in the educational process, free from discrimination and harassment, and that schools have an obligation to combat racism, sexism, and other forms of bias. You have also memorialized this in Regulation 5131.2 that talks a little bit about bullying and how the district is supposed to educate students about the negative impacts of bullying, discrimination, and intimidation. Our family is deeply concerned that this vital education has not been prioritized by the district, which is creating a glaring void in student development. We live in a racialized world, yet AUSD, in my opinion, and our family's opinion, is not addressing the damage that race-based hate can cause minoritized students in their life. According to the California Department of Education, 92% of the students that attend AUSD are minorities. Yet, AUSD schools are not providing formal instruction to the student body about anti-racism, discrimination, bias, microaggressions, intersectionality, community cultural wealth, and the harm that white privilege can cause within our society and our schools. Title VI is a federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, and national origin in educational programs that receive federal funding. AUSD receives that federal funding, and we really can't assume that racism doesn't exist here. AUSD is educating students about science, math, English, and history, but it's, in my opinion, and our family's opinion, ignoring the reality that many AUS students may be discriminated against at some point in their lifetime. And without proper education, some of our AUSD students may actually become the person that spews racially motivated hate speech and carries out racially motivated acts of hate. We're not immune to the horrors that our nation has been experiencing on their school campuses. So, this policy was enacted, 5131.2, in 2019, but I'm not so sure that it was operationalized. I'm asking tonight that the Board consider, agendize, the idea that we should protect the 92% of our AUSD student body who are members of minority groups by requiring that every school educate its students about racially motivated acts of hate that can take the form of bullying and physical violence. I ask this because on March 1st, our son was the victim of racially motivated Hate Act on his school campus. Two of his soccer teammates, who are Caucasian males, chased him, surrounded him, and repeatedly called him nigger and hi guay show, which I think means black monster. No adults were present to help defend our son or protect him. Despite other students telling them to stop, they continued on, and they yelled even louder. I just want you to think about what could have happened if my son, if our son, was alone with those perpetrators. I'm happy his friends were there. He could have been harmed. His safety, his happiness, was stolen that day by two people that had no respect for minoritized people. We're asking the Board and the executive team to please help us restore his sense of safety. We have asked for a no-contact order, but we don't know if it's been granted. We've met with FMS Administration, who is extended members of our family, and they have agreed to work with us. We want to partner. I'm a professor. I create this type of curriculum. We want to create something that can educate the students about anti-racism, hate speech, bias, microaggressions. We've also expressed our concerns to some of the members of AUSD's executive team, but we haven't gotten very far with that. So, I'm here before you today to ask that we prioritize our students. The idea that restorative justice should be given for the offenders is offensive to our family. We should educate the student body about anti-racism practices, and we should support the victim, which is our son, to help him process the race-based hate that was enacted upon him at his own school. I'm asking that AUSD comply with Title VI regulations and develop a program that raises awareness and educates students about anti-racism practices and DEIA principles. DEIA is diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. Every student should feel safe and protected at their school. We love AUSD. We've been here for 12 years. We want our last two kids to graduate here, but we also know that we can work together to make it better. AUSD failed our son on March 1st, but we're still willing to work with everyone so that other students won't experience what our son experienced. We are asking the Board to compel every single AUSD school to develop and implement an educational program that teaches students about anti-racism practices and DEIA principles. Every student should feel safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. As mentioned earlier, we can't respond to this meeting, but we were certainly heard. We're now moving on to our action items. First would be public hearing on transportation services plan. Mr. Reston.
Thank you. Good evening. Before we do the public hearing, I do have a brief presentation to share a little bit of information about our Transportation Services Department and why we are bringing a plan forward for public hearing and eventually, hopefully, for Board approval at our next Board meeting. Okay. Not working, Scott. Thank you.
It'll work then.
Okay. So, as part of the 2223 budget enacted by the State of California for this school year, they included additional funding for transportation services. As part of the requirements to receive these additional funds for home-to-school transportation, school districts are required to create a plan that is Board-approved by the end of this month for the following school year. And the plan addresses primarily how we, as a school district, provide home-to-school transportation services to our students. We provide a lot of other types of transportation, field trips, and sports teams, and all kinds of good stuff. But this is in particular about home-to-school, including general ed students and special ed students, those with individualized education plans. If you can move it forward, thanks. Okay. So this is some of what I already said. The way they're calculating the allocations to school districts is it's the greater of the current amount of LCFF transportation add-on that we're receiving or 60% of our reported transportation costs for the prior year. For Arcadia Unified this year, that's about $550,000. So that amount will change every year as our transportation expenses change every year, but they are fairly consistent as are most of our department expenditures. Wait, did I go wrong? Sorry. This may look familiar as a School Services of California slide that I borrowed from them, but it gives a nice summary of what the plan, what the state is asking for us to provide in this transportation plan. And going across there, we're looking at prioritizing services for students in grades TK through sixth and low-income students. We have to talk about providing transportation for students with disabilities and homeless youth. Then also talk about how our unduplicated students will access free transportation. And again, unduplicated is a low-income student, or a student from a low-income family, an English learner student, or a foster youth. And the plan has to be developed in consultation with several different community partners. All right. So, taking each one of those sections, I'll go through them in these next few slides. And I think the overall message for our transportation plan here in Arcadia is that we are doing all of these things already. So what the state is asking all school districts in the state to do are things that we've been, services we've been providing to our students for many, many years now. So, for us, this is actually a very simple plan. We're going to continue what we've been doing. We will prioritize planned transportation services for students from TK to sixth grade and also low-income students. And there's still some clarifying of the language that we need from the State of California, like what does it mean to prioritize planned transportation services? At this point in time, we think it means that we will continue to provide the number of routes that we have always been providing to our students. It is not a requirement to add routes or to add, for those districts that don't provide home-to-school transportation, it's not a requirement to add it. We will continue to provide these transportation services for students, for children and youth that are classified as homeless, and also students with an individualized education plan or an IEP, and those are our special ed students. We have 17 bus routes and drivers that go out every day. The majority of those are already dedicated towards our students with IEPs. And so we'll continue to provide those services as we do with the homeless students. Our current process for providing access to these unduplicated students is that they will contact our transportation office, and we'll provide them no-cost home-to-school transportation. Obviously, we need to know who they are, verify that they are eligible, and then we'll get them set up on one of our home-to-school routes. And lastly, we are required to gather feedback and input through meetings with our partner groups. And these are the meetings that we have had, and I think the last one is tomorrow with our teachers' union. Anvitha is very well versed in our transportation plan because she's seen this presentation twice, and she helped me arrange one of the meetings, so thank you. I will say at the bottom there, the last one, we're still working on the local air pollution control districts and air quality management districts. So we've reached out to the South Coast AQMD, and we're still awaiting a response. Honestly, that's kind of a strange one, but, you know, we're doing the best we can. We did meet with Arcadia Transit and talked with them about their fixed routes. And I actually have a meeting Friday morning with MTA just to get some more information about free passes for our students on all of the MTA and MTA-related lines. And that concludes the presentation. I'll take any questions.
I'll give one question. So even though our plan is kind of what we've already been doing already, do you anticipate any substantive change in ridership?
That's the real unknown, is as this service becomes free of charge to more students, what will the demand be next year? And honestly, we don't really know. You know, we've seen the increase in interest in free meals. That's up, I think, 60 or 70%. I don't know if that's a good number to use to compare. But that's, I mean, that's a good thing. If there are students out there that are interested and need these services, and we can provide them, that's a good thing. What'll start to happen is, we currently have parent-pay home-to-school routes. And so as students who are interested in a free service submit that request, they'll start to take more of the seats on the buses. And so we may lose some income in the transportation department, and that's, you know, probably one of the things we could use these additional funds for. It could get to the point where 17 bus routes is not enough, and we have to look at adding a bus, adding a driver. And obviously, there's upfront costs and ongoing costs associated with that. So we're just gonna honestly have to wait and see and manage it the best we can, and I have, you know, full confidence in our transportation department. Do you have a question?
Currently, are all of our buses occupied for the routes that we have?
We definitely still have capacity.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just a question of, do we fill up, and what type of rider fills up those seats? Yeah. And we start to collect information ahead of time, you know, prior to the start of the year about who's interested in riding. And so we'll start to get some data over the summer. I mean, that's our normal process to collect that, that level of interest from families before the year starts.
Now, will there be any additional outreach to students that we may know from food services side that are low-income? Will let them know of these services? Or just how do they find out about the bus availability?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are, I'm not exactly sure of the details, but I imagine that we do some outreach every year at the start of the year as we collect that information. Certainly, people that have ridden in the past, I imagine we reach out to for the following year. But there are some ways that we can, you know, share this information again or more widely for next year. We could work with the site staff to put out that information, or maybe with the PTAs. Are just some thoughts that come to mind.
I actually remember that, at least at the high school, they did have a table.
Okay.
And they were...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, they did have a table at the high schools. I don't know about the others. Registration, offering bus services, actually spoke to them when I was there. So I think that they are trying to reach out, but I was gonna ask the same thing as, can we reach out to the students that we already know are low-income and could, you know, benefit from the services?
Yeah. And in all honesty, like, yes, we want to offer these services to those that need it. And, you know, being the person in the business office, it's like we're, I'm also thinking about, you know, what is our capacity if we reach our maximum capacity? Like, where do we go from there?
Do you know, like, if we had to add another bus route, like, what do you have an average cost? Or, you know, like, how much that would cost to add?
Yeah. So a new bus, like a big bus, they're $300,000.
Okay.
Which, you know, sorry, a quick aside, like, it's been interesting having these community meetings because the plan is about, like, how do we provide these services? And invariably, the conversation turns to, how are we gonna spend the money? And so what I've often shared with people is that, you know, this is a tremendous opportunity for the district to purchase a new bus every year, which with laws changing, seat belts becoming a requirement in 2030 for school buses, it's actually really good timing, and I'm glad the state provided this because we're gonna need this money to get there in 2030 because most of our buses don't have seat belts. So, that said, I mean, a new bus is $300,000. A route to run it with a driver and... a route to run it with a driver and maintenance, fuel. The number I've heard in the past was around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Now with inflation, maybe it's a hundred and twenty. So, I mean, it's manageable if we're talking about one additional bus and a route. But as the years go on, and, you know, so it's just, we'll, we'll really have to kind of play it by year and see what happens this first year.
And the lead time on those buses is a couple, several years, right?
It can be, yes, depending what kind you get. Yeah. And, and so the, the process for this plan this evening is to, to have a public hearing, and then to bring it back at the next meeting for approval. And I guess my question is, how would we bring that back at our next meeting? Would it be a separate action item or on consent? Something we can figure out later also. Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with the on-consent.
Me too.
Provided there's no changes this evening. Or in the meantime. If something changes, we'll, we'll bring it back. Thank you.
I didn't formally open them. Excuse me, public comments, but I will formally open the public hearing. If you have any comments or questions, I will close the public hearing. Our next action is with Arcadia High School District Summer School Courses 2023. Dr. Hackney.
Good evening, board. This is the annual report on summer school that is coming to Arcadia High School. It's an online program, and there are two parts to this summer program. The first is if a student in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade has gotten an F in a class which they need to graduate from high school. They will be offered online course to do that makeup credit recovery, and that will be four days a week from June the twelfth to July twenty-first. The second part of this is the UCA through G requirement. So if a student has gotten a D or an F in math or science class, and they need to have that class to matriculate to the next class, they are offered an online recovery again during the summer from June twelfth to July twenty-first, Monday through Thursday. And it's a drop-in sort of thing. They're working online. There's a teacher assigned. They can work with them and know that they'll be available during those hours. And hopefully, they'll make up the credits and move right along. If they're a twelfth grader and they're not able to take the summer program, they will not take an elective in twelfth-grade year to try and recover those credits during the year. And that is Arcadia High School Credit Recovery Program for Summer School. Any questions?
I did want to just add that our wonderful partners at Arcadia Education Foundation stepped in at the last minute. We had an increase in the software that we've been using for a number of years. Some brilliant new CEO decided on a new payment plan that was ten months instead of twelve, which requires you to pay more. And so AEF stepped in and, and helped provide that gap funding. So just a shout out and a thank you to our wonderful foundation for that.
And that company would be Canexus Pearson, that used to be called Gradpoint, and that's, all they did was change to a ten-month calendar. Thanks for the clarification, Dr. Van Oesel. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the district summer school courses?
I'll move to approve the summer school courses.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Kinsler, a second by Mr. Chung. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next action item is our second interim financial statement and certificate of solvency. Mr. Vaughn.
Good evening. Yes, so I'll, I'll jump right in. Hopefully, this is working. So the second interim report is an opportunity for us to re-project our budget for the current year, and it reflects actualized financial results through January thirty-first. The, the primary changes that are reflected in the second interim report are increases to the LCFF revenue. What we're able to do with the UPP and TKADA, since the first interim report, is we actually have actual results for the current year in terms of our UPP, which is about three and a half percent higher than where we had it in first interim. The TKADA was actually, it was a projection during first interim. What I actually used was our P1, so P1 every year when we report our average daily attendance. We report it two times a year in P1, which goes through January. So we have those results, and the results from P1 for our TKADA actually increased by about forty-two, and that drove up our LCFF revenue. The other, and I'm sorry, just to finish that thought in terms of the, the two reporting periods. So P2, which is what we actually get funded on, will happen at the end of April. And that's actually what our LCFF will be funded on, but for the most part, the change between P1 and P2 is fairly minimal. So I used P1 for our second interim projection. The other primary change is a decrease in the restricted state revenue. And this was, this decrease was proposed by the governor in his recent January budget proposal for the following year. And the decrease was to the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Block Grant. This was, he estimated, or the, the school services at the, the workshop, they estimated the decrease to be about thirty-five percent. For us, that was approximately two million dollars. Now, there is talk that it may not happen because the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Block Grant was actually in the enacted twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And because he's proposing this as part of his budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, this reduction would require legislative action. And there's talk out there that this may not happen. However, again, with our conservative approach to budgeting, we did want to reflect it in our second interim. As I go through this, you know, we'll, we'll focus on the change between our first and second interim projections. But one thing I did want to mention in regards to what's not in this second interim projection is that we're not reflecting any adjustments for negotiations or settlements since none of those settlements with our bargaining units have been finalized. So none of that is reflected in here. Okay, moving on. The, this is a look at our general fund. So starting at the top, here we have the beginning fund balance. We have for both the unrestricted and the restricted funds and the total general fund balance on the far right. You can see that we're starting the year with fifty-seven point eight million dollars. Total revenues of a hundred and forty-five point six million. Total expenditures of a hundred and forty-eight point seven, which gets us to a deficit of three point one million dollars. Other sources and uses, that deficit of one point seven million dollars is primarily our contribution to the deferred maintenance. Again, we, we, annually, we set aside about one point two million dollars to our Fund fourteen for deferred maintenance. These are the big capital projects that we do during the summer, a lot of roofing, pavements, and so forth. It's about one point two million dollars of that, and the balance of that is a contribution to our Nutrition Services Fund. We're anticipated, currently, we're, we're projected to, to be in a deficit position in Nutrition Services. Again, that's kind of conservative. I think as we progress through the year, what we have so far, every month, I meet with Kathleen Ashworth, and we go through her financials. They're trending very, very positively. They're not in a deficit, deficit position currently. You know, as Derek has shared, I think during the board meetings, that the, the volume of the meals that we serve continue to increase, and that helps us financially. So hopefully, the deficits that, that's projected for Nutrition Services does not materialize. So the change in fund balance, when we net the three point one million dollar deficit from the, the difference between revenue and expenses, and the one point seven from other sources and uses, gets us to a deficit of four point seven million dollars. When we net that against the beginning balance of fifty-seven million dollars, we're projected to end the year with a balance of fifty-three point one million dollars in the general fund. On the next few slides, I'm taking a little bit of a different approach. You know, typically, when, when we go through this, these presentations, I tend to focus on the unrestricted general fund. But because of all the, the shifts in terms of, you know, especially the decrease in the restricted fund, I wanted to provide kind of the same charts, but we'll take a look at the general fund as a whole, and then we'll also look at the, the unrestricted portion. So on the left-hand side, that chart has our revenue and expenses for last year, actualized amounts for last year, our revised budget for the current year, first interim, and then our current second interim projection. The green bars represent our revenues, and the red bars are the expenses. And on the, on the right-hand side, that chart is the change in fund balance, which is the difference, difference between revenue and expenses. You can see that on the far right, the change in fund balance during first interim, we had a deficit of three point six million dollars projected, and that deficit has increased to a deficit of four point seven million dollars. That is primarily driven by the decrease in that restricted block grant revenue. Just at the top, my notes there, the change in terms of revenue, since first interim, revenue decreased by three hundred thousand dollars and expenses increased by eight hundred thousand dollars. So this is just a waterfall chart that kind of helps to bridge the gap between our first interim projection and the second interim projection. So before I get into the, the details of this, there's a lot of fluctuation going, like, a lot of movements and the different components of our budget. But really, what's happening is, at a very high level, that one point one million dollar, I guess, negative change is really driven by the decrease, the two million dollar decrease in the restricted block grant revenue, offset by about a million dollars in the increase in LCFF and interest revenue. That's really, what's really happening. What's happening is in between, there's a lot of back and forth in terms of fluctuations within each component. So to give you an idea, the revenue there, starting from the left-hand side, the revenue decrease of three hundred thousand dollars, that is the two million dollar reduction in the arts block grant. And that two million dollar reduction is offset by nine hundred thousand dollars in additional unrestricted revenue, seven hundred thousand from the LCFF, two hundred thousand from increased interest revenue. It's nice that as interest rates rise, we do earn more money from the, the balance and our general fund balance from the treasury. In addition to that, we also received additional funding for the CTE incentive grant. It came in two hundred thousand dollars higher, and since first interim, we've, we've also received about four hundred thousand dollars in gift offers. And so there's, and then we also had about a hundred thousand dollars in revised Title I funding. So that's what's offsetting the two million dollars in revenue. Now, the rest of these expense items are really driven by additional, these expenses are primarily from the incremental revenue. And what I mean by that is, for the salaries and benefits, supplies, the salaries and benefits, that's primarily tied to the increase in CTE, the incentive grant. We typically, when we receive more money for these programs, we, we have to balance it. So the increased revenue would have been offset by increased expenses, if that makes sense. And then, for example, the supplies and services, that four hundred thousand dollars between those two, that is primarily from the gift offers and field trips. So as, as we recognize the increased revenue for gift offers and field trips, and there, you know, it increases the expenses, and that's primarily sitting in supplies and services. The capital outlay and transfers, it's a hundred thousand dollars. This is actually, I guess, more of a, it's a little redundant, but this is something that we shared with the board in a previous budget transfer. It's primarily tied to increases in our salaries and benefits for Nutrition Services. Excuse me, if you recall, a few months back, we actually, we provided an enhancement for FTE, for Nutrition Services, as they've created more full-time positions to, to help support the need with the increase in meal volume. And with all that said, that kind of gets us to the, that gets us to the four point seven million dollar deficit for second interim, for the general fund as a whole.
David, I, I think we're all closely watching the two million dollar governor's arts deduction.
Yes.
Art grant deduction for us. When would we, I think we're all hopeful that could possibly turn around. When would we have a final decision on that from the legislature?
I, I would say that during the May revise, you know, typically, the May revise gives us a more accurate picture of the proposed budget. So it'll be interesting to see if that's still sitting in the May revise. So the May revise, I think, we have, our workshop is, I think, May nineteenth. The governor typically releases that. I want to say a week before. So I want to say like in mid-May, hopefully, we have a more concrete, I guess, path on, in terms of how we treat that arts block grant, whether that's gonna stay in or be reduced.
And if not May, then by the end of June, when they finalize the state budget, if you'd like, we can start a pool. We can, if we, if we lose it, we can get it back in the pool.
So this slide, it's, it's kind of the same slides, same format I was just sharing for the total general fund, but this is just on their unrestricted. So in the unrestricted general fund, you can see that it's a better picture. So the change, you know, on the far right, you'll see that the change in fund balance went from a deficit of ten point seven million dollars to a deficit of eight point six. It improved by about two point, two point two, if we're rounding, just based off of the, the change in revenue and expenses. But revenues increased by a million dollars and expenses improved by one point two million. And I have a, of course, I've got a waterfall chart just to bridge that gap. Again, the revenue, starting with a revenue increase of nine hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in LCFF tied to the increase in UPP and the TKADA. An additional two hundred thousand dollars for the interest revenue that we're getting. The treasury interest rates have increased, if you recall, over the last, I want to say, I think last year, interest rates were down as low to like half a percent. The guidance from the treasury is now, we should plan or project interest revenue at an interest rate of two point six percent. It's almost like a fivefold, but, and again, I'm still very conservative with these projections, so there's probably some upside in these numbers. The salaries and benefits and the services, the change here is primarily tied to, again, the restricted block grants. If you recall, during my first interim projection, we recognized the restricted block grant revenue, but we had not yet developed a plan for how we were gonna spend those funds. What this is reflecting now is, as we've discussed, leveraging existing allowable expenses that we incur in the unrestricted general fund to be applied to these restricted block grants. And the salaries and benefits are primarily a portion of our counselor salaries and benefits that we're shifting from unrestricted to restricted, to apply, again, to the block grants. And the services, that improvement is primarily utilities. Again, in these block grants, one of the allowable uses is operational costs, including utilities. And we've seen that utilities, as I think we've all seen in our personal utility bill, has increased significantly. So we've applied four hundred thousand dollars of utilities from the unrestricted, typically funded through unrestricted funds, to these restricted block grants. And so between those three items, we're pretty flat with supplies and the capital outlay. But between those three components of the budget, that's an improvement of two point one million dollars, and that gets us to the deficit of eight point six million for our second interim. This is a look at our enrollment and attendance rate trend. So I just wanted, I know we've talked about, a lot about this, but it's, you know, it's more good news, and hopefully, this materializes. But you can see that, I'm sorry, the different shades, I'll just go through the, the, the format of this. The bars are the enrollment amounts, and the scale is on the left-hand side. The red line is our attendance rate, and the scale is on the, on the far right. The dark blue bars represent actualized amounts. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, as I mentioned, our C beds, the official enrollment count was the first Wednesday in October, and that was eighty-eight eighteen, which was an increase of a hundred and forty-nine from where we were last year. And I have the, on the red line, I have those data points in yellow because those are still projection. Those are still projected. We typically, on average, come in a little bit above ninety-seven and a half percent with our attendance rate. So we won't have final numbers until our P2 report for attendance. So the twenty-two, twenty-three attendance is still just a projection. And we have the, the lighter blue bars on the far right are projections for the, for the following year and the year after that. And those are based off of our data from Davis Demographics. The one thing I wanted to mention is that our twenty-three, twenty-four projection is actually an improvement of a hundred and forty-seven compared to where we were during the last projection for twenty-three, twenty-four. Despite it being a decline of thirty-eight Despite it being a decline of 38 in the enrollment from 22, 23, it's still a lot better than where we were before in terms of projected enrollment. And hopefully, you know, this materializes and you can see that in 24, 25, it actually goes up by one. Good news. And this is a look at our general fund trend. The, over the last, is that seven years of actualized data since 2015, 2016. Last year in 21, 22, we, we kind of peaked over that period of time with an ending general fund balance of $57.8 million. And of course, that was boosted with some of that one-time COVID money. The green portion is the unrestricted balance in the general fund and the blue portion of the bar is the restricted fund balance. And you can see that, again, over the next, over the, for 22, 23 and the two out-years and the multi-year projection, we are projecting a decline. Again, this is always a very conservative approach that we take for the multi-year projection. We, we don't change our cost structure. We assume the same expense structure, even though we have slightly declining enrollment. These projections reflect the same amount of staffing. We actually layer on CPI for supplies and services about 3 percent. We assume those increases. We assume increases for step-in column stores and perves for information that's available. And at the same time, not necessarily adjusting any of those expenses with the same, with the same revenue projection for enrollment. So that's kind of why it declines because it's a conservative projection. And for the second interim, what we're required to do is, in order to certify with a positive certification, we need to maintain at least a 3% reserve in the second out-year. So you can see that in the 24, 25 fiscal year, our unrestricted fund balance is projected to be $16.4 million. That's about 11%, so it's well above the 3% requirement. And just in summary, second interim projection reflects a decrease in the total general fund of $1.1 million in the fund balance. Again, primarily due to the decrease in the restricted block grant revenue. And when we look at the unrestricted general fund, it's a, it's a better story. It's an improvement because we're shifting funds from unrestricted to the restricted. And with that, you know, the multi-year projection, as I mentioned, indicates that we're able to meet our financial obligations through the 24, 25 fiscal year. And with that, we ask the board to approve the second interim report with a positive certification. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'm sorry to interrupt, if I could just add one, one quick point. David mentioned that two pots of one-time money we're getting this year and that it's going to be reduced potentially by 2 million. One of them is the learning recovery emergency block grant. And then the other one is what he mentioned, the arts, music instructional materials discretionary block grant. That's the one that may be reduced. That pot of money, the arts, music, instructional materials, that does require a board-approved expenditure plan. And so, once we know how much we're actually getting, we'll bring that plan forward to the board for approval. I mean, so what, what David is presenting tonight in terms of the, the adjusting of expenditures, that is our plan currently internally within the executive team and with David. But obviously, that could change as time goes on and with input from the board. And once we finally have the final number, then we'll bring that forward to the board for approval.
Questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the second interim financial statement and certificate of solvency?
I'm going to approve the second term financial statement and certificate of solvency.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Chung, seconded by Mrs. Yee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We do not have any items removed from the consent agenda. Next up is our report on Hugo Reed Elementary School Board Learning Walk. Dr. Forsy.
My favorite part of my job, going out to school sites with all of you and seeing the wonderful thing that schools are doing. I won't share specifics because I know we had all of you at the boardwalk and I know you have things you want to share, but a couple of things that I would like to point out is I know a very wise man who once said voice and choice are very important in schools. And we absolutely saw that play out in totality during that learning walk. I'd like to recognize your staff, Principal Loxton and yourself, and the vulnerability in opening your campus, campuses completely to the board and the executive team and visitors to go into whichever classroom we wanted to, while also providing a schedule of kind of what we could expect to see. Really appreciate that color coded also, so we knew kind of what, what kind of tier we were looking at. And then the intentfulness that you and your staff to the journey that you're on and the system that, the system that you are designing and we were able to watch that to meet the needs of all learners. And that is not easy. It's not easy to get, you know, an entire group of adults moving in that direction together and believing in that direction together. And so I just want to recognize the work that you all are doing together. And then lastly, the joy that we saw on your children's faces that, you know, that is so unique and so special. And I think it's why we're in education is to, is to see those smiles and that joy. So thank you. And with that, I think we should start here with our Hugo Reed Learning Walk.
Thank you, Dr. Forsy. Thank you, Principal Loxton and all your staff for being here. It wasn't for a few fortunate events, I think you might still be up at Palat, so it's good to see you. I'll try not to take too much. It's always awkward to go first too because, and you don't kind of want to leave stuff. But you know, I love Hugo Reed. You know, I've been there. This is my 10th year, 10th and final year. So it's actually really sad in many ways, but just a wonderful day in general. And, you know, I, I just want to say how just proud I am to be a Hugo Reed parent, part of the Hugo Reed family and just to see the great things that you've done, Principal Loxton, over the last couple of years. You, you told us about WIN, which is what I need, which is such an interesting way to kind of frame that student choice and student voice that Dr. Forsy was, was talking about. We definitely saw it, you know, all day long across both campuses, whether it's like the, the morning bins or some of the math tools I saw being used. But it, it just such a, such a great program. And most of all, it's just the, I, I heard mentioned owning their learning, having students own their learning, which is very true in terms of the student choice and, and voice in, in their, their instruction. But I also want to say that you've given that to your staff as well, you know, in your support of these innovative programs. And just always encouraging folks to try new things and believing in them. Even in, in second grade, I know they were trying a new app, Pixin, for some of their, for it's like a comics type of creation tool. And it was the first time they were trying it. And it's so wonderful that you're in that environment where you can try new things. And if it goes well, great. And if not, you know, we tried and that's okay. And that's, and that's such a really important environment to have, not just for, you know, making improvements, but to model that for our children because they have to see that, that it, when, when you're learning, it's okay to fail. And it, it's not just words, it's in, in our actions and it's in your actions. So it's just so wonderful to see that. I will try not to take too much more, but yes, thank you for the wonderful day. I enjoyed all the reading that was happening. It's, it's lucky that Reed is in Hugo Reed and I know that that was by accident, but it's still great that you're, you're kind of taking advantage of that. Got to do that, the pop your top that afternoon. And, and last Friday, the Read Across America was adding that into this too. And I got to read a front desk, first two chapters by Kelly Yang in our classroom. And I was really surprised that our students, half of them had already read the book. So it was, I wasn't expecting that, but it's kind of cool to see that. You know, there's just so much reading happening, even though something's not necessarily in the curriculum, that the students are looking at different, different literature, inclusive literature to, to read and experience. So yeah, thank you. And I, I'll, I'll try not to cry before my last day of school, but no promises. Thank you.
All right. So yes, Raymond's covered a lot of things that I observed as well. And thank you, Principal Loxton and all of your staff. It was a really great day. Gosh, where to start? Where to start? The kindness crew just walking in and just all these smiling faces, so excited to, to show us around and like just, you know, tell us where to go. I just love like all the programs that you've instituted there for leadership in different ways, like the Kindness Patrol, they were amazing. I got to talk to, I think they were the third graders at recess and they were so excited to show me. And then it was actually kind of funny and I think this is something, you know, that all of our elementary schools, but I asked the students, I said, well, what are, what is something, you know, what is a challenge that you have to, to sort out, you know? And I said that we've never had to. I mean, it was kind of funny, but it just speaks to just how the students support each other, the staff supports each other, and that's what I saw in every classroom. I loved the WIN program and I loved being able to go to different classrooms and seeing how the teachers used it. Everybody used it in a different way that fit their classroom and their students. And then when I asked students, like, do you like WIN, you know, how do you feel about it? They were so enthusiastic. They loved it. They said, especially, I think in one class, they were, WIN was being used for literally time for themselves to just either catch up on work or relax or, you know, have some time, which I think with everything that our students have gone through is so important and it was definitely well utilized. So, and as Raymond said, the fact that there is that willingness to try new things, you could see it all over. And I mean, letting us see the speech pathology, I mean, that was amazing. I loved being in there, seeing her just interact with the students and they had a lot of energy. And I don't know how she did it, but she was able to not only get the lessons in and do what she needed to do, but also make them feel heard, make them feel, I mean, you know, have conversations with them all while she was doing, oh, you know, put your tongue up to your roof and like say, oh. So it was just a wonderful day and I loved how we ended with the students doing the restorative circle. They were amazing. I, I think much better than I could have ever do. And just owning it and being able to do that with a group of adults, especially the board and, you know, admin is pretty incredible. So thank you so much. So much more to say, but I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. I'll try not to repeat everything, but we spent half our time on the primary campus, the other half on the elementary campus. It was a great visit. I really continued to look at focus on reading and phonics appropriate. That was during the Read Across America Week. I saw a lot of options available through students, really neat. Saw a program being used on how to make a comic using avatars of their classmates. That's really cool. I wish I had that when I was in school. It was my dream to be a comic book artist. Saw classes divided into small groups. It seems to be very common throughout Hugo Reed, but also throughout all other schools. Format's great. It's, it's a way to solve problems together, to share and also look out for each other. There also seemed to be a lot of teacher assistance in learning the classrooms. That's, that's really good stuff. During recess, I experienced a very touching moment. A student, I believe it was a special ed student, took Amber by the hand and dragged her over to Dr. Benazdal and I. And then he held both our hands and asked Amber to take a picture of us. And I don't, I don't know how he, how or why he identified us for this photo op, but it's very moving. And as mentioned, we finished our visit with the newly designated goals room. And it was great to hear from all the student leaders. They're just so bright and confident, great communicators. And yeah, Hugo Reed continues to be a kind and caring place. There's nothing better than a place where learning is a safe and welcoming environment. So thank you, Principal Loxton and your staff. A great visit. Thank you for Amber for putting up these pictures.
Okay. Fabulous visit and I think my team members really covered most of it. But what I just loved the most was watching the pure joy in the kids' faces as they ran up to many of you that I see sitting here at different times during the day, you know, saying hello to Ms. Loxton or, you know, running to a teacher to ask something special or, you know, can we do this at recess or, you know, all the different things. And their absolute love and fondness for their, both the teachers and the staff there was very, very evident. So you've really built a climate where the kids appear to be thriving very well. And even the more reticent kids were stepping out and getting photos and felt comfortable doing that. And, and, and that's just remarkable. So for me, that was the absolute joy and scene. I can't wait to see what you and your team do in growing that goals program. We of course have it at Dana Middle School for the middle school, but this will be the first, I believe, the first at elementary. And I think your team is uniquely able to handle this, so it'll be really fun to see. And there was one other thing. Just escaped.
I'll move on, but feel welcome to interrupt me if it snaps back. Thank you, Principal Loxton and your entire staff. What a wonderful morning. What stuck out to me, being in the different classrooms, was truly the staff's ability to recognize the, the unique learning strengths, talents of each and every student. And yet having the highest expectation for every student. And that came out loud and clear through the student voice and their confidence. When I asked any student, could you tell me what you're working on? Describe to me what you're doing? How's that connected to what you were doing yesterday, tomorrow? Very confident, very articulate about what they were working on. And I think that just speaks clearly to the educators and all of the work they do in preparing their lessons and ensuring that kids see the connection between what they're being taught and, and what they're learning and the why behind that. I'm going to also share an experience that is going to come back and be used against me. I'm sure of it, but when you gave us the freedom and the choice to just go from the pri, to the primary or the upper, I couldn't figure out. So I started at the upper and I never got time to go back to the primary. And I felt pulled, like I wanted to see it. I didn't have time. I couldn't get there. And then that bell went off and went, ah, that's how Principal Loxton feels every single day. I get it. I'm so sorry. I know we've been working on that for years. Mike Simo from 20 years ago talks about the dilemma of the split campus and just how hard that is to deal with. And I know there's been plenty of positives that that community has appreciated with the primary over the years. But it was difficult, but thank you for a wonderful day. Remember, all right, moving on.
All right. As we ask Kim to come up and, and finish this, I'll just share a story. We were standing on the playground with Dr. Benazdal and we were just kind of watching the kids and we were commenting or thinking aloud about, you can learn a lot about a school by just watching kids on the playground, watching how they wait in line, how they decide, oh, that ball was in or out, and they get back to the end of the line and how they encourage each other. And it was, it was just a really nice moment to watch your children interact with each other without an adult having to be there saying, no, 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 that was out, you lost. They just police themselves and it was through kindness and it was pure joy to watch that while Fenton was, was getting those pictures. Very famous that day. But just watching the interaction of the kids tells you a lot about the, the feel of that campus. And it comes back to adults and caring adults in the example you said. every day. So thank you.
Good evening, board members. So a couple things, and all of my bosses. So fun fact about the day, I have to share this. So a student, we were asking her what she learned from the day, and she said, Ms. Loxon has a lot of bosses. And it was hilarious, and it just stopped me. And I didn't have any words after that. And I did some reflecting, and I think it does speak to the student voice. Like, the students are in a room full of adults that look very important. And she was, she was really comfortable just sharing that fact with you. And she might be embarrassing her principal, and it was okay, because in that moment, she knows that I value what she thinks. So, so thank you, all of my bosses for visiting and dedicating that day to Hugo Reed. And thank you for recognizing all of those details in our day. And I, and I'm now getting emotional because I had a lot that I want to say, and I'll share. But every single one of you noticed those efforts that we make every single day, and it's hard work. And the details down to what's happening on the playground, to putting students in groups, to making sure students feel heard. It is not easy when you have that many students. And, you know, I hesitate to blame COVID. I know that's where we tend to go. But the reality is, we came back last year and had new challenges. And my Huguenot Reed community, they rallied, and they are willing to nerd out with me when I bring my brain research to them. And I'm like, what are we going to do? How do we get students engaged? And they are willing to be creative. And I love that you recognize that they were taking risks, starting a new app with second graders when you have a lot of visitors on campuses, a very brave move, Kim Garber. And, and I, it makes me feel proud that I've, I've sent that message and that I want us to model that for students, and it feels like it's happening. But thank you to you, all of you, because that means you have made my, my community in Hugo Reed feel comfortable enough to take those chances, knowing that it may fail, knowing that we may be learning, and we're doing it in real time. And it didn't intimidate my team from, from trying those things and from welcoming you to all of the classrooms, giving you the freedom to make the choices about, yep, you feel like you're choosing one campus over the other, and it can be tricky. So thank you for your support and, and recognition and all that we're doing. And I do want to give the color coding credit to Dr. Warzakin, because she was strategic in helping me with the planning of our schedule. I want to thank our entire Huguenot Reed community, all my teachers. They are working tirelessly and, and reminding me about Huguenot Reed traditions, because I had been on that campus for five years, but we came back from COVID, and we're like, why are we doing that? Should we continue? And they're holding our, you know, our roots and our traditions, but knowing there are things that we may need to change to, to give students what they need. And I think we're, I think we're doing some hard work, and I'm seeing the progress. So thank you. And thank you for letting us be organic on that day. That is what a typical day looks like at Huguenot Reed, which, you know, you have a lot of visitors, and you might want to put on a show and maybe, you know, increase, you know, what we're doing and try to throw it all at you. And I reached out to leadership earlier in the year, and I said, what, you know, what are you proud of? And they said, our WIN program, and it's what we do. I mean, what we do every day, it's hard work. So thank you for letting us have a completely normal day. And then you still found all of those moments of celebration and pride that we're feeling. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank, you know, we talk a lot about the teachers and, and the community at our school, I mean, down to like Ms. Anna in Nutrition Services, who will quickly email if she notices a kid doesn't seem just quite right in the morning, or Mr. Junior giving high fives on the playground. We're just, we're also in sync. So my office staff and everyone, we're just, our community is just, it's strong. And I appreciate you recognizing how it's showing in the students. And you're right, watching them on the playground gave me a little bit of anxiety. I'm not, I'm not going to lie, like a lot of people on the playground. And the students, they, they can do it. And, but it takes a lot of hard work from behind the scenes. So I appreciate you recognizing that. And President Ng, I want to tell you that I just heard tonight a little fun fact about that photo op. I, I understand that that student was able to tell his teacher later in, in his own language, that he noticed that you and Dr. Benazdal look very important, and he wanted to make sure that you knew that our school was a special place. I'm not making this up. This was what was reported to me. And I, I just, I want to thank you for making him feel special. And that was his way of showing you his voice. So thank you. Thank you to the troopers who sat through David Vong's report. That was exciting. Thank you for being here with me. We are moved by your work, David. Thank you. It's hard work what you do too, to keep us afloat over there. So thank you. Thank you for my entire Huguenot Reed community who's watching from home. Also, a rainy day for elementary school teachers is not easy. So the fact that they're all still here and awake and watching, and the ones that are taking care of yourselves at home and not watching, I support that too. So thank you. Thank you for all your support, and I appreciate his time.
Thank you.
Great visit. Our next item are our department updates. Dr. Benazdal.
Yes. Let's get right into it with Business Services. So, dear Kessel, it's all yours. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Now's your chance to go, Kim.
No, I'm, I'm off.
Okay. Updates from two areas of Business Services. First one is Facilities from our Director Tony Barrios and actually our, our Facilities Coordinator, Melinda Williams, talking about our big project at Holly Avenue. Yesterday, while we were all enjoying our unique March Day off, they were out there pouring concrete, which they successfully completed in, in between all the rain. Yeah, it's really good news. So the, the foundations for both of the buildings have been poured, and that is great news. They have to do one more big pour. With that hopefully being scheduled, we are on track to have the buildings being dropped in place over spring break. So at the next board meeting, I'll give you the, the final update. By then, we should hopefully have a much clearer picture on whether that's going to happen or not. But that is today, as of 8:22 PM, that is our plan, is to put that building in place over spring break. Pending weather, I should say, Melinda added, pending weather. And then, excuse me, in the area of benefits, which falls under David Vong and Fiscal Services, I met recently with our Health Benefits Committee, which is a group of employees that each represent a different, either bargaining group or, or group of employees within the district. And we meet every year in the spring, sort of preview our health benefits. And we get a presentation from our, our health benefits broker from Alliant about what our new cost will be for our health benefit plans, which are provided to us through CISC. And that's typically the work we do. Over the past few years, that work has been relatively easy because the increases haven't been as great as the increases that we've provided to our benefit cap during negotiations. But at the end of our process last year, we started having a conversation about our vision and dental benefits, which is something that we've never talked about. So I sent out a survey to the 800 employees that are benefit eligible, asking them their opinion about our vision and dental benefits. I closed that survey back in November, and the, the Benefits Committee just met at the beginning of this month, and we reviewed the, the data that was provided. So just some, some quick information about what we, what we learned from that survey. So out of 800, 488 people responded. That's 61% response rate. Most of our members are taking coverage either at the single level or no coverage at all, and getting cash back, or maybe covered by a spouse. The majority of our employees are either somewhat are very satisfied with our vision and dental plans. There are some members that are interested, and this was the real question, like, do we want to add benefits to our plans, knowing that it might cost us more money? So there was a, a group of employees that, yes, they were interested in added benefits. And you can probably guess who they are. They're, all of us that are wearing glasses and contact lenses, you know, adding frames every year. That was sort of the biggest interest. But it wasn't a majority. It was 20, 30%. And, and that was the, the real crux of our conversation was that the responses that we got did not provide a clear direction for a course of action moving forward. You know, the, the role of this Benefits Committee is to make recommendations to district administration about possible changes that we would make for our benefit plans. And there was just such a wide variety of opinions about our vision and dental plans that we, we concluded as a group, you know, unanimously with consensus that there just was not substantial agreement on a path forward to make any changes to our vision and dental plans. So they will stay as is, but everyone felt really good about that conclusion, because in anyone's memory, this is the first time we've looked at these vision and dental plans and, and how our employees feel about those plans. So it's a very good process that we went through. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Moving on to Educational Services, Dr. Forsen.
All right. Dr. Mendoza, it is roundup time for kindergarten classes. So all of our parents who are enrolling for kindergarten classes will be attending or be invited to attend Roundup in April and May. And they're getting that information through the enrollment process, which again, is primarily online, but they're getting all that information about attending and what days their campus will be, will be offering Roundup. So I'm sure we'll be dressing up and going out to sites, and who knows what other hijinks are going to happen with that. Congratulations to our middle school English learners who are almost done with their LPAC testing. Again, it's a lot more extensive than it used to be. So it's, it's quite a process. And our high school students who are completing the summative smarter balanced science test, which will be the end of their state mandated testing, which will come just in time for AP testing, right? So we get that done, and then we head right into AP season. AUSD is submitting their preconditions evidence for induction requirements. Induction again is for our newer teachers that we've added to the AUSD family. Many thanks to our induction steering committee for reviewing the evidence and providing feedback before we submit. From Jim Anderson, enrollment for the 2023-24 school year is open for all grade levels. The enrollment office is very busy, and we are seeing many parents enrolling students for the 23-24 school year. And Jim works in conjunction with, with Kevin Herishu and that with enrollment and, and staffing. And it really is a balancing act this time of year. We continue to work with elementary schools and middle schools to implement proactive, positive behavior support strategies. Longley Way just held a, a half-day behavior review meeting where teachers, coaches, the principal, and the behavior response team leadership discuss frequently seen behaviors and build understanding and consensus around classifying common behaviors seen in the classroom and sometimes out of the classroom. So we're not treating all behaviors the exact same way. TIS and Jim have been reviewing behavior data to better understand current trends in our student behavior. We have been receiving very positive feedback on our new completely electronic permit process, which we have been testing with parents and staff. We are currently, and we are currently gathering performance measure data for our LCAP. And again, the LCAP will come in the last meetings of June to you for approval. From Dan Hackney, 16 middle school teachers plus two of our tech coaches will be attending the Q Conference in Palm Springs, March 16th through 19th. This is the leading education conference in the realm of innovation and is a must-attend event for many of our educators. Our teachers will come back with many new ideas to work on implementing in their classroom and share with fellow teachers throughout the district. And this is something where a lot of our innovations come, are kind of tested, piloted, and some of them make it through district-wide implementation. The fifth grade students from all over Arcadia Unified, plus the drama students from the middle schools, will be attending the preview of Cinderella, the musical being performed at Arcadia High School. The students will be bussed over to the PAC tomorrow, Wednesday morning, for an 11:00 AM show of the first half of the play. Weather permitting, some of them will also eat lunch at Arcadia High School. The goal of implementing MTSS in classrooms and schools continues with another MTSS meeting on Friday, March 17th in the afternoon. All the elementary schools will gather to share best practices, look at data, and decide on steps for the MTSS Learning Walk scheduled for April 20th and the Summer Institute. And finally, just recognizing the loss we've had recently in our school district and Holly Avenue. And thank you for being Principal Oakland. And we know it's a tough time for your school, and just know everybody's here to support you.
Any questions for Ed Services? All right. Moving on to Human Resource Services, Dr. Herishu.
All right. I'll be brief. So on behalf of Special Education, from Dr. Catherine Mahoney, they continue to work on articulation meetings for students moving between schools and planning for the extended school year. And in terms of HR, HR has posted 16 new certificated job postings over the past two weeks. So we are deep into recruitment season for 20, 23-24 school year, and we're very much looking forward to bringing on new talent. And that concludes my report.
All right. We went on to Innovation and Strategy, Greg Gazanian.
Usually I have a little more time to prep with Dr. Herishu, so it was a quick one.
Cut you off guard.
All right. A few updates. First, as I mentioned last time, we've begun interviews regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion in Arcadia Unified. Just want to thank everyone who's taken the time to sit down with me and just have some conversations around those themes. Again, a lot of different perspectives, and it's an honor to be able to collect those in one place. We have parents, teachers, admin, students who've been willing to take the time, and we're continuing to schedule those interviews out. We still have slots for those interviews. So if you are listening at home or in the audience and want to take part in those interviews, feel free to reach out to me. Greg Zanian, my name is on the website. Or if you've received emails regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion in the past, you can certainly reach out there. I'm glad we're talking about innovation tonight. I believe it's been a few months since we talked about ChatGPT. You may be familiar with it. It's an artificial intelligence system where you can ask it to write letters, ask it questions, and it can respond in a very realistic, human-like way. Earlier today, there was an announcement that GPT-4 is coming out, which is a new AI system from OpenAI. And as part of the goal of the Strategy and Innovation Department, if something is cutting-edge technology, we want to get our hands on it and try it. So we have applied to be part of the beta system where we can ask it questions and try using it. We were part of the beta when the last one came out. So we get to take a look. One thing that's particularly of note is GPT-4. This AI system is actually even better at taking standardized tests than the last version was. And in fact, it's been really interesting to read the research paper on it and just see how really, I won't use the word talented, it's, it's an artificial intelligence system, but how able the system is to produce answers to these questions that we've generally attributed to only humans being able to do. So again, the goal is to be able to see this technology early and be able to have that conversation and just explore what it might mean for us as an educational institution. Finally, very excited to see what comes back from the Q Conference. Many years ago, we used to go with a big group of people. I used to be on that team. So very excited to hear what people see, what seems impactful. And just a reminder, really to all of us, that we have a certain place to try those things that they see, and we're happy to fund that. So looking forward to that. And that's the conclusion of my update. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I read an article about ChatGPT-4, and one of the things it mentioned was that one thing it can't do well is creativity or innovation, new ideas. So you may be the only one who has job security, Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer.
Well, hardly. And I, you know, there's a reason it's in our values to be creative and to offer empathy. And I think that's something really important to remember with these models, is that these models are built on massive amounts of information, but they're massive amounts of information, observations of things that have already happened and already exist. And more and more, for our students, for our staff, for our teachers, we are dealing in ideas that are new, that don't exist yet, for new needs, and we're adapting. We've said again and again, you know, we're preparing students for jobs that don't exist. So I think it's a really important point to know what it does well and certainly what it doesn't do well. And the good news is, we're training our students for things that it does not do well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last up, Chief Communications Officer, Ryan Ferran.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Well, the good news is, we haven't sent out a coronavirus update since August 16th. So let's just take a moment and celebrate that. Less good news is, we'll be likely sending one this week, which is some minor modifications to the LA County Health Order. So we're expecting those this week, and we'll let people know what the health order updates are, and we'll get that out to staff and our parents and community later this week. Some more good news, we were at our annual California School Public Relations Association conference a couple weeks ago, and excited that our district won a few awards that were recognized. We won two Awards of Merit and an Award of Excellence. One of the Awards of Merit is for Amber's fantastic graphic design work for an enrollment flyer she did, which is, if you know anything about graphic design, you might think this looks a little basic or whatever, but you might think this looks a little basic or whatever, but there's some science and strategy and techniques into this. So congratulations to Amber, just fantastic work. And she's really good at graphic design and helps us a lot with some of those important flyers and communications. So great job, Amber. You are awesome. Another one, we won an award of merit for was actually something we did today, which is our kind of surprise announcements for our Teachers of the Year and our Classified Staff of the Year. So that was cool to see that. And I give full credit to Dr. Van Nostal years ago, the kind of idea and concept to do that, and then the execution of we kind of tried to make a big deal and do it as public as possible, which is easy for me to suggest or do, and then he's got to go in public in front of a class or on stage one year in the PAC to do it. But it was great to see that kind of his execution of that and how we, today we did it at the high school with Miss Goto in front of her students and just see she was.
We almost lost her out the back door.
She was running for the door, and she realized it wasn't a door, and what was going on? So and again, Dr. Van Nostal does an amazing job. This is good. This is good. This is good news. Don't worry. There's fifteen of us walking in the class in the middle of a class, and she doesn't know. So it was fun. So thanks to Dr. Van Nostal for doing that in just a special moment. And then we do the videos and photos, and Amber takes great photos. So that was recognized. And then glad Ann Vetha is here, and she got the first copy of the official Imagine Magazine. This is final product is out, produced. We have a thousand copies, so people can pick them up at the district office if they like. We're gonna deliver some magazines to each school site around the district, so they'll be available there. And so we won two award of merits, and our interns won the award of excellence for this magazine that we did for the first time. So Ann Vetha, congratulations to you and all of our interns that led this. Again, this is, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent student-led with the artwork, the design, the layout, the format, all the stories, the photos. So it was just incredible collaboration with our student interns at the high school last year. Most of our meetings were all about the magazine. It, you know, we took a little bit away from our typical duties, but it's just rewarding to see this. And the final product looks amazing, and our students did all the work on it. So proud to see that for sure. And that is my update.
Questions? Includes our reports. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Onto our consent items. I'm calling for a motion for consent items A through K.
I'll move approval for consent items A through K.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mrs. Kinsler, seconded by Mrs. Yee. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent items have passed. We're now up to comments of the board members and Superintendent. Mrs. Kinsler.
Goodness. I've been meeting with AEF on a regular basis there. They've been meeting monthly instead of the by or monthly that they were, you know, every other month. And the main push is making sure summer school goes off. We've had changes in summer school directors and that sort of thing, and they're dealing with that and working through those issues. So you've seen the posters, summer school will be starting, the class schedules, or the registration will be coming up this month. I don't know what dates. I've forgotten. I didn't bring that with me.
My card on my desk, but I forgot it.
And I don't get those in the mail or anything now. So but so those are all happening, and they've been working very hard on that. And my condolences to the whole Holly Avenue family. Very difficult news to hear. And that's, that's it.
Ann Vetha, would you like to comment?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Ing. So, Ms. Kinsler, you actually said something at the beginning of how teachers are like the heroes of the society, and how it doesn't matter how much they know, but it matters how much they care, and that's what really impacts a student. And I have to one hundred percent agree with that statement. The Teacher of the Year this year, Miss Goto, she's my AP Physics teacher, so I have the pleasure of seeing her every single day. And she's honestly one of the best teachers I've had throughout my career here at Arcadia Unified. She's so, so welcoming, and the students, their well-being in terms of their mental health is her first priority before it comes to teaching any of the material. So her check-ins, her postphoning exams, if, you know, we have assemblies in the way, or if we have different activities going on at the high school that take away from class time, she's so understanding and so well-deserving of this award. So I'm so happy that I'm her student. I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Eslin as well for talking to students about what they think of the transportation plan. It shows how much you really care about student voice, and that really echoes in every individual here today. So on behalf of ASB and DCI, you've come to talk to us. Thank you so much. I'd also like to say, give another shout out to Ms. Nuvali and Mr. Ferran. So you see the magazine here. And yes, the students worked on it, but I have to say that it wouldn't be possible if it was not for their mentorship. They're professionals in their field. They can easily say, do X, Y, Z, get it done, format's supposed to be like this, just do it like we say. But no, they cared about what we want. They cared about the colors we liked. The whole front layout design, it was proposed by our graphic design heads. They really put that much trust into students and really wanted us to create something that we had our own ideas for, and they supported every single step of the way. So really, this magazine wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. So I have to say thank you to that. And I also, given the opportunity, I would like to shout out two people that are in the audience actually today. Dr. Rosaken, oh my God, I can't believe you, I can't believe I'm seeing you after twelve years. I was your student, your first grade student in two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, and I can't believe twelve years later I get to see you again. But it's so great seeing you. Dr. Rosaken's class was my first exposure to public speaking and presenting. We had these show and tells, I believe that's what it was called, where we had a pink form, and every Friday, we, a student or a few different students would go home, get an object that was very meaningful to them. I remember one year I chose a nutcracker because I really enjoyed watching this play that I went to. And we would write a little summary of why this was important, and then we would share it in front of the whole class. And so my exposure to public speaking started in first grade. And I have to say, I won't be sitting here if it wasn't for the foundation that I've built in Ms. Rosaken's class. And right next to her is Dr. Mendoza. And Dr. Mendoza, I was a student in your garden club at Holly Avenue from, I believe, twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. And Dr. Mendoza showed me what it means to be a leader. Your generosity of spirit and just your compassion to every individual you come across is so inspiring and so touching. And, oh, I don't know what I'm getting but you're honestly one of my favorite mentors, and I wouldn't be here without you. So on behalf of the students here at AUSD, I have to say, we are so lucky and so blessed to be in the hands of individuals that care about the students beyond their success in the classroom, but as an individual and as a person who is eventually, when they graduate from the high school, ready to walk into the world that's in front of them. And that's not only from the success of what you learn in your math or science class, it's about the tools that you develop to become the young adults that we are when we, when we do graduate. So thank you. And Ms. Kinsler, I do agree, teachers are the heroes of society. Thank you.
Back to Ms. Malapati. Mr. Chung, I know it's tough to follow up.
Can I just pass? It's just not fair. My goodness. Just to also comment, not in any way close as elegantly as Ms. Malapati about, Ms. Kinsler, about your inspiration. I was watching the Oscars on Sunday, and it's very interesting to see, well, the Everything Everywhere All at Once movie won seven awards, but one of the directors, Daniel Shiner, in his acceptance speech for Best Director along with Daniel Kwan, he mentioned, you only have like forty-five seconds, and because they are two of them, they have like less than that, he spent the precious time to thank his public school teachers that inspired him. He had so much inspiration, you know, during his childhood. He actually, he named them, you know, on air. So it's just amazing the power of public education, the power of the teachers to, it's like Ms. Malapati said, really get them to become the young adults, the amazing things that they're able to do later on. So that was really cool. Happy Pi Day, three point one four. I'm gonna list the rest. That's all I remember. And happy International Women's Day, which was last, last week. As always, I'm so proud to serve on this dais with amazing women who I look up to and am inspired by your hard work and the amazing things you do for our district. So thank you to all three of you, including Ms. Chavez, who was not here. But yes, very proud to sit on this dais with you. Congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Goto. Yeah, she was, she was very frightened by us. But it was so, so amazing to see when she asked, she didn't feel like she was deserving of the award, but when she asked her class, you know, do I deserve this? They all like nodded yes. So, you know, just a great affirmation for her to see that, you know, not only does everyone else see that, but her teachers most importantly, I'm sorry, her students most importantly do. I got to see a counseling webinar on, from the AHS Wellness Center, from Dr. Anderson and Leslie Klipstein on executive functioning, which is a great, great session, very well attended. Lots of parents had good questions, and obviously the counselors had great answers. So it's just really cool to see all these webinars happening. And so much easier is one of the few good things coming out of COVID, that, you know, these, these sessions can happen online and more people can attend. And good to see that happening still. I unfortunately missed the Athletic Booster Dinner. I'm sure you'll talk about a little bit. Thank you for going, but I, yep, I completely missed that. It was on Saturday. But the next Athletic Booster Meeting is actually tomorrow. It's gonna be virtual, so just try and get freshman families to come and kind of check it out and see what it's all about. So if anyone would like to attend, they don't want to drive all the way to the high school. I don't know if it's gonna be raining still, but it's gonna be a little bit easier to check it out online tomorrow. And I think that's it. And also my deepest condolences to Kathy's family and the Holly Avenue family for the loss. It's just heartbreaking. My thoughts, prayers for with y'all.
This is you.
Okay, so I'll start off with a congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Goto. It's interesting because I, you know, I've been at the high school for a few years, you know, a few years now, and I, my kids are not science kids, so I've never met Ms. Goto. But I actually met her at the Holly Avenue Steam Night. She and her physics club were there doing these physics, and I can't, I wouldn't even be able to tell you what it was. But the one thing that struck me when I was there was she was so like just enthusiastic and so supportive of the students that I'm really not surprised that she is Teacher of the Year. You could see her passion for physics and for her students. And, you know, and she, it was a rainy night. I mean, it was like, it was just, just to be able to see that and all the, actually all the other high school students who were there helping out our Holly Avenue students with the steam. But anyway, congratulations to her. Yes, I did attend the Athletic Parents Booster Club's annual fundraiser at Villa Katrina. It was a really fun night. It was our first full annual fundraiser that they had since COVID, which was great. So we had everything, the food, the casino, music, DJ. And what was really nice was they also honored our AHS tennis coach, Ruth Legosi, who is retiring this year. And she's had a great run at Arcadia High, so I know we're gonna miss them, but we were able to meet the new tennis coach, who seems like he's gonna be great. So looking forward to seeing their season next year. And then they also honored our AHS Assistant Principal, John Finn, who is also retiring this year. So it was a lot of celebrations, and it was really nice. I felt that they, they honored these two amazing individuals who have really done a lot for our students. I also wanted to actually thank our high school history teachers that, let's see, Mike Freeze, Jerry Wong, Matthew Wong, Kelly Percy, and First Avenue History Teacher, Carol A. Nakazuka, for spending their entire Saturday with me at the Huntington for symposium on Asian American experiences in California, Past, Present, and Future. It was actually a really amazing day, really wonderful speakers. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Greg, who really went out of his way to help us get there and support the teachers in that. And so I really enjoyed just sitting down with them at lunch and hearing about what they wanted to do with the history department, and how the things that they were thinking about with ethnic studies that is happening. And I actually learned also that they're gonna be offering an Asian American Studies course next year for history, which I was excited about, and now understood why they wanted to go to the symposium. So I'm hoping that they can come and tell us about that class, you know, at a board meeting in the future. Because I'm really, I think everybody here would be interested in that and sort of how they're moving forward. So thank you, Greg, and the district for always supporting our teachers with PD. I know it's super important, and it's really valued by our teachers. So, let's see. Last but not least, my heart goes out to Holly Avenue. I knew Kathy Hustler as well, since both my kids went to Holly Avenue. I was completely heartbroken when I got the news. But I'd have to say that just really grateful to have known her, seen her in the classroom, seen her do the amazing things, and just her heart for her students was pretty amazing. So just my condolences to her family and to Holly Avenue. And of course, as you know, everybody here in the district is here to support.
Thank you, Ms. Yee. Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Ms. Goto. I was sharing with a couple of people as we were walking back from her, from scaring her in her room, that it's been such an incredible arc to watch with, with her career with us. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Goto when she was a parent volunteer when I was high school principal. And she was sharing at a time that we really needed some science teachers, that she used to teach science, but she hadn't gotten her certificate since she came to the US. And it was like, well, you need to do that, because we would really love to have you here. And it took a while, but she came on staff, and to watch that arc, and fifteen years later, to be standing in her room in front of her students, celebrating her as our LA County Teacher of the Year is really special and just speaks to the special parents and clientele that we are so fortunate to work at, and how often we're able to tap our own talent right here in Arcadia. And then, you know, building on your inspiration today, and okay, thank you, truly, some inspiring words. But teachers are heroes, and we lost a hero this week. My condolences, Principal Oakland, to your entire staff. You all have endured more loss than anyone should have to deal with. Clearly, Kathy has been a part of your all's life and our lives in Arcadia for so many years, and that loss is gonna leave a deep hole. I also know and confident that her legacy, her work, her passion, her care, love for students lives on in so many lives. And I think we can all take comfort that the legacy of an educator can't be counted in numbers, but in those lives. So she will be missed.
Dr. Van Nostal and I attended the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning, and there's one interesting fact to share regarding real estate in Arcadia. There are currently only sixty-seven homes on the market. Apparently, it's the lowest number that's been in recent memory. So I just wanted to point that out. However, there's still a lot of buyers. They say the open However, there's still a lot of buyers, uh, they say the open houses are still very crowded events. Again, congratulations to, to Ms. Goto for being named Teacher of the Year. She was quite surprised. And, um, the honor is very well deserved. I, I enjoyed reading to Mrs. Vinci's, Vinci's kindergarten class on Friday during Read Across America Day. I got to read, uh, one of my favorites, Dr. Seuss's Green Eggs and Ham. That was, uh, that was a lot of fun. And, uh, finally, I, I'd like to share some sentiments about Holly Avenue's Kathy Hustler. Our hearts are incredibly heavy tonight as we mourn the difficult loss of our Arcadia Unified family member, Holly Avenue Elementary School Teacher Kathy Hustler. Kathy served our Holly Avenue community since nineteen eighty-nine and was a compassionate, devoted, and dynamic educator. Day in and day out, school year after school year, Kathy inspired our students to take proud ownership of their learning, cultivating lifelong empathetic learners. She led by example, constantly pushing herself to try new things in order to further her continued development as an educator and colleague, and to further enrich her learning experiences of all those fortunate to have her as their second grade teacher. We will miss Kathy dearly. Her hearts and thoughts are with her loved ones through this very difficult time. We are eternally grateful for Kathy's great contributions to our Dolphin community and district, and for the joy she put to all of us and all of those lucky enough to know her. With that, I'm dedicating this meeting to Kathy Hustler. Being adjourned.